Okay, we are starting today's work session for March fifteenth for two thousand and eighteen. If we could all stand to say the pledge. Jim?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And go on.
Thank you. All right, so today we will start our work session with our discussion items. It's the first is the tri-board briefing. And if you could all introduce yourself just because it's twenty-two, so everybody knows who's here. So we'll start with you, Jeff.
Jeff Seaman, town environmental planner.
Robert Costacaf, he's town attorney.
Jefferson Murphy, building and planning administrator.
Dawn Thomas, in my capacity, is attorney for the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you. Okay, who would like to start?
Jeff, right in.
I'll be happy to.
Jeff, right in.
So I've distributed for your review a flowchart. We were discussing, one of the things we were discussing was how we could make the process clearer and, you know, the construction process, whatever it is, commercial or residential, clearer, and how we could maybe visualize how it works so that the public could understand it better and that we could maybe make some adjustments between the boards so that things would be a little more user-friendly for the public. And, um, and just to streamline and save some time and perhaps some funds for the developers, so whatever they are, residential or commercial. So I sort of laid this out, and so, just two things. One, it's got a watermark on it, I apologize. Couldn't get to that to download into my system, so it's a trial program, so it was free. But anyway, the, um, and this presumes everything is approved, which obviously isn't the case, but it's otherwise, it would be way too complicated for us to have a productive discussion, in my opinion. So this is why it's laid out this way. And I didn't want to do it as everything, as if everything was denied, because that'd be unfair also. So if you look at the start, the middle box is a project. And so whether it could be a commercial project or a residential project, if you look to the left, there's a building permit for permitted use, no one relief required, SECRE type two. That would go straight to a, my typographical misspelled building permit. If that application was a residential application and needed a zoning relief in some way, it would go to the zoning board of appeals for dimensional relief and then would go back over to get a building permit if, in fact, that relief was granted. Thank you. Then, uh, the other direction, if you go over to commercial building, um, project, much more complicated, but, uh, it's either a town board or a planning board site plan application. Then it would go to, if the zoning board is involved, then it needs any SECRE relief, I mean, uh, zoning relief, then it would, it would connect up with zoning. SECRE would be engaged, and then...
Well, it would, at this point here, that's where lead agency would be determined.
Where it says SECRE, yes. So then if you look just to the left...
Well, at the, at town board or, or planning board site plan application, well, before it comes with, before the board, that's where lead agency would be determined, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
See, I think that the line from town board or planning board site plan application right to ZBA should be eliminated. I think it should go down to SECRE first and then go to either ZBA. Or then from SECRE, go to unlisted type one, type two, and then go back to ZBA.
I think that's not an unfair edit, so I'm going to modify that.
So it goes SECRE and then, and then down to whether it's type two, type one, or unlisted?
What you do is you'll have a horizontal line connecting SECRE to ZBA.
And then go either here, here, and here.
Yeah, this way.
And then whatever these decide, then it goes to ZBA.
Okay, so...
Then you hit SECRE, you're going to make it, the, the lead agency, I've kind of like summarized the little things, assuming that the town board or planning board is a lead agency. This is typically how it goes. Then you're gonna, I mean, if there were DEC permits or other agencies involved, those would be coordinated in that review and those people could, or those agencies could in fact take lead agency there. And then that would be a little different.
So my question is, if, when you have SECRE and then you're determining what type of project it is, wouldn't ZBA then be the step underneath that, once you determine what type of action it would be, before it goes before ZBA?
Type of action is, is, I apologize, is right in the SECRE regs in terms of whether or not it's a type one, a type two, and or unlisted.
Right.
There's no really discretion with that.
No, 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 I know there's no discretion with that, but what I'm saying is, is right now, if we put the line horizontal between SECRE and ZBA, and then we have the, oh, okay, so the determination would be during that SECRE process?
Yes.
Okay, my apologies. It is set up that way.
So they're coordinating there, if necessary, if it's an unlisted action, and you can't see the line, because I had trouble drawing it, but as an unlisted action, technically it could go straight across the bottom to building permit. I mean, uh, unlisted type two, potentially, depending upon what it is. If it doesn't need an EIS is basically what that is.
Right, the process, the site plan process, which is continuing on its way without SECRE being completed at that point.
If you have a type one, you see you go down to environmental impact statement. And actually, there should be a line that goes from type one to ARB in there.
And to landmarks.
And then there should be one that connects ARB to landmarks, if necessary.
But, but unlisted action, also, just to stay on that line?
Yes.
The unlisted action should also have like a dotted line that, between that and an EIS? Because we...
It could.
Right, so...
That's potentially possible, so I'll do that. I'll throw that in there.
And then that, that then goes into, if you end up here, then you're really ending up at a type two action, right? So if you have an unlisted action over here, go into an EIS, then kind of hops up to type two?
No, no.
No?
The type two is going to go, still would go to landmarks and ARB if, it's always going to go to ARB, it may go to landmarks, depending, so I can put a dotted line there instead of a solid line.
But unlisted action could also be going before the ARB and landmarks. You never have an unlisted going there. If it, if it, if an unlisted...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
If it unlisted becomes where you need an EIS, there's certainly, or an unlisted could certainly end up in ARB and landmarks.
And this gets confusing. You have the application referral process outside of SECRE, where referred out to all the involved agency agencies. That's going to be sent to ARB and/or a landmark, depending on what the application is. That's outside of SECRE.
Okay, so then, so then those two should have, those two should be a separate, like a separate box over here that people flow into.
I could slide them over.
Right, so ARB and landmarks?
Right.
And even, and even if it is...
And because they're just advisory, so they're not really making decisions.
Well, landmarks is not advisory, they're codified.
Okay, so their determination is...
Yep, it needs a town board override.
You could override it, okay, so that's the difference.
So I think that it should go unlisted action, type one or type two, and go to ARB, because any type of commercial site plan is going to require ARB regardless.
Right, so...
But we don't have a, you don't, we don't have a, we don't have a, we don't have SECRE completed at that point?
I understand, but to coordinate the review, it says type one coordinated review.
Yeah, it could be...
There should be something that goes to the ARB, because the ARB say they are going to be visual impacts that would affect the coordinated review.
Well, that's why I think there should be a separate box over here, and then you could have here, you know, as, as it may be one that they go to.
Understood.
Without a definite one.
But it is a definite one, because if it's coordinated review, it needs to go to ARB.
So, um, you know, I can tweak that a little bit and make it clearer. This is, you know, just for discussion purposes, so we could see what we're thinking and what works. And obviously, again, I did not include any denial, because, you know, that just really makes it crazy.
We'd have three pages of charts.
Yeah, exactly, so, um...
This is confusing enough.
And, you know, it's, the watermark makes it worse. It's not as bad as it looks, but, um...
And I really do apologize.
I already got scribbled on this.
There's just no way for me to do it any other way.
I think you did a great job. It's very clear to me what it is.
We can look beyond the watermarks. I'm going to get a little better at this program, but, as I use it, but, um, anyway. So then, you know, landmarks, and we'll make this a determination under landmarks. And then, you know, potentially you get to the building permit at the end of the process. You know, it's not, it's not simple. New York State has not made our building and zoning processes simple, and so it's, you know, you have to deal with what you have. And then, as we discussed yesterday, I think coordinating with, um, you know, just to ensure that the ARB is in at the right slot, so that they're not, you know, back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. If you can get those two, two agencies, the landmarks and ARB, where you want them, and I think you, you're in a good spot, and I think this is pretty square and simple, and I don't think you, you know, little, little tweaks, I think you're otherwise in good shape. And now that Jeff's coordinating with SECRE, and we're getting some, you know, internal dialogue improvements, I think that's good.
Larry, there's a lot of feedback still.
And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you.
So you're going to take that out?
Yeah, I'm going to redo it.
You're going to start with dotted lines, which means may, instead of...
Yep, I'm going to rework it based on the comments, and then we'll recirculate it and everybody...
Colors and stuff like that, maybe?
It did, it is color, I think mores is color, but my, when I hit the print button, uh, the copy button, I didn't hit color.
This is really good. I kind of wish I had it a couple of years ago, but, uh...
Me too.
Started from...
This is very helpful.
Starting somewhere. Going forward with good stuff.
Yeah, good, all right, good.
So Bob, do you want to...
Yeah, I'll, I'll chime in a little bit now. One of the things we were tasked or asked to look into was the addition of a new chapter to our town code. I drafted substantially a chapter which would end up at chapter two twenty-five. I believe it would fit from an alphabetical standpoint and also from the standpoint that there's a few chapters that are reserved in that area, which will be entitled Environmental Quality Review. That chapter, it's still a work in progress, so it's not able to be distributed yet, because I have some further feedback that I need to work with, with Joe Pulp, Jefferson, and Jeff Free, as far as, you know, laying out our designation of type, type one type of actions that would be in addition to those that are set forth in the DEC regulations. So it's, it's still a work in progress, and I'm hoping that within the next week or two, either my next work session or following work session, I can have something for you that would be able to go to a public hearing. Briefly, it sets forth some definitions for what an environmental assessment form is, what an environmental impact statement is, the, you know, the defining what SECRE or the State of Ohio Quality Review Act is, and then how lead agency is determined, determination of significance, when it would be applicable. And as I said, you know, designation of what would be type one, type two actions.
It should be a definition type of...
It's got some definitions, but it's not an extensive definition, and it would be in addition to what's spelled out.
More procedural types of...
Procedural, and there's some steps to the stuff as to what would be a type one type of action that would be in addition to what the DEC presently sets forth. And it's kind of involving to, and, and take an input from you, once it's in a form where I can distribute it.
That's what some of the, I mean, the, the state sets, sets certain things that are automatically a type one.
Right.
But what many towns do also is, is also have some other...
Refine it.
They refine it, and they include some of what would typically be an unlisted action, move it over to a type one action for, to the town, and so that they would fall underneath that.
Makes it more restrictive?
Not really, it just helps with the coordination of the review. For example, if you were to decide that all commercial or, or multi-story or multi-use buildings within X number of feet of the historic district would be a type one, then they would be required to do the long form and, and go through the coordinated review.
Because currently, that's not a listed action? Is that why you're saying that?
I have type one, using the state list that it's substantially contiguous to cultural resources.
But it's, as far as type one, type two, it's not listed?
But I can make that a type one based on that.
Got it.
But you could make that more specifically a type one within your own code, so the applicants are clear that anything within these districts or within proximity of specially designated environmentally sensitive areas, special groundwater protection zones, historic districts, artist district, any district you choose, that, that is reasonable. That's the key word under SECRE. It really has to be reasonable.
And I think it lays out a, a good framework for developers coming in. They know what the, they know what, what we're looking for. So when they're, when they're coming in, deciding, you know, whether to build here or not to build here, or what to do, there, it's very clear of what we would be requesting.
So the state DEC doesn't recognize these areas?
They do, but on a much larger scale, so sometimes it's...
Not very specific, no.
It's not as easily adapted into, you know, our, our size of the municipality.
So this is more specific to our community?
Correct. So that has a submerged chapter. They have the Shinnecock Reservation in Shinnecock Nation that has a very significant interaction with the town. They have a lot of, um, history in the town.
Oh, yeah.
And so, in their chapter, they typically identify those areas that are important to the Shinnecock as a type one action, but only their level of review.
I like it.
So how would we handle EPCAL in that particular instance? If it's an unlisted action, and we went to state legislation for a ninety-day review process, and, you know, if it's a groundwater protection zone or a Pine Barrens Core Area building, I mean, is there any code provision proposal that addresses that? Or are we leaving EPCAL out of the code proposals and the possible type one actions?
Well, probably, um, you have the generic EIS and a generic finding statement for, for EPCAL. That does not eliminate the potential for any individual project, even one that, that may not comply with the finding statement or match exactly what was studied, to be required to do its own draft environmental impact statement. Or consistency analysis to see whether or not their project is compliant with the finding statement. Typically, when you do a generic environmental impact statement, it can allow projects to move forward without additional environmental review. But it would depend upon the number of acres that are likely to be disturbed, proximity to, you know, the special habitats that are out there. Are there any additional takings, permits that would be required? And just depending upon the application could trigger a full EIS, but streamlined to the specific categories that needed to be addressed that were perhaps not refined in the generic EIS.
The one thing, Jody, I think that is really important, you hit on a really good point, with the ninety days, we want people to be consistent with our GEIS. And if you are consistent, you can get the benefit of that ninety-day review. But if you are proposing something outside of our GEIS, that's a pretty significant...
Understood, understood. I just, you know, I just want to make sure that with the eight hundred thousand dollars that we spent on the environmental review and in the subdivision process, that, you know, everything was covered in there, because I know that we've had discussions of recent site plan applications that have come before us, where being in close proximity to a runway is triggering other reviews. And if all of the development from anybody that's coming in in the future for EPCAL, whether it be CAT or whether it be somebody else, that, you know, there's surety that the ninety-day approval process, which is what attracts people to the property to begin with, is something that, you know, that everything in our GEIS and our adopted environmental impact statement is addressed when it comes to being in close proximity to the runways, that the properties are, you know, each site that we've designed on the subdivision map are more than ten acres, which would automatically trigger SECRE, so...
So when an application comes forward, it would be to the advantage of the applicant to provide not only the long environmental assessment form, but an expanded explanation in greater detail behind it, so that you can use that ninety-day period to review the information. If it becomes a tug-in-war about asking questions and getting information back in order to reasonably judge that the project is consistent with the generic EIS, then it becomes a delaying problem.
I mean, the, the...
So if, if they're...
Very helpful, the generic GIs to have in place, without, without a doubt.
That's why I did it.
And, and like you're saying, if you're, if you're conforming to what is, what was studied in there, but once they go outside studying that, it does become, you know, the lead agency does, it does trigger the SECRE, and the determination is made at that point. Determination is made on anything that comes forward. But, but if it, if it's within the generic, the impact statement, then, then it's, it's a lot easier to, to review quicker.
And it can happen even based on the intended use, and maybe a use interpretation by ZBA has to be made in order to determine whether or not this does or does not work.
Because a lot of the GEIS was based on historical uses. It was really on, based on a broad plan and a form-based zoning, so, so that people could come in and they could get through the process within ninety days. So I just want to...
Okay, so we could take the example of, of the Conic Care, which is a research facility.
Which wasn't a part of the GEIS that we recently did.
Right, um, but, you know, but it's sort of within that, that body of landscape of EPCAL. And they were asked to go back for an interpretation as to, you know, this is a research facility or, or not. So, uh, once that was determined, then the ninety, you know, as an example, as the generic example, that could move forward very quickly.
Okay.
So...
That's all. I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks, Jeff.
I guess when we're working through that secret chapter, we'll keep in mind that ninety-day approval process.
Yeah.
So that we don't come into conflict with it. Be mindful of that.
Because it's state legislation.
Right. So that's something that, you make a good point.
And if you have a list of, of type ones, or, or you're thinking of any, just throw them back at us and work with that.
And just keeping in mind that, you know, the zoning and the GEIS was based on historical uses on the property. So, you know, if there's anybody that did think that something should be a type one and it was a historical use, then we might face challenges when it comes to trying to type one it.
Well, that's, that, you know, I don't, the, the SECRE is in place to, to monitor what's built there, to make sure it fits within the environment that they're looking to build something. So, you know, that's the point of this, so that we do have a, a clear idea of what we're looking at, what we want to look at, and when we review this. It doesn't, you know, and then you figure out what type you're putting it in.
Well, I'm just saying that the GEIS and the eight hundred thousand dollars that we already spent addressed all that that you just said.
But it's still generic.
And this, this flowchart doesn't take into account the existence of a generic EIS, so that would be a whole different animal.
It's in an FEIS.
If an application does a type one with that EPCAL...
We adopted an FEIS, a final environmental impact statement.
All that does is mandate the duty of sequestration, which is thirty days. And if you start that when the application comes in...
There's one person talking, so we can, go ahead.
Even if it's an application as a type one action within the EPCAL, all that mandates is that you get, you have to send it up to the other involved agencies, which, within a thirty-day period, you have to provide a comment back. So you're still within that ninety days. And again, it's really incumbent upon the applicant to make sure that they're consistent with that GEIS and our law. If they're not consistent, why are they even making the application to us? So that's, that's the question, that's a really important question to ask of the applicant. We have a vision, we spent eight hundred thousand dollars on a GEIS, we went through the heart...
That became an FEIS.
Right.
A final environmental impact statement that was adopted by the board.
Before they spent the application, we should have that conversation, so they know before they spent the application, what the process is going to be.
But, but not only that, I mean, when the Navy gave us the property way back when, and when we signed on to the Pine Barrens legislation way back when, in nineteen ninety-four, they were supposed to stay outside the fence. And when you are coordinating a review with them by, by deeming it a type one and sending it back to them, I don't know, I just have concerns about that. Because we went through all the processes and the eight hundred thousand dollars to avoid having to go back to the DEC, to avoid having to go back to the Pine Barrens Commission. So I guess, I get what you're saying, that the uses, but I just am concerned about interpretation from the zoning board of appeals as to what the historical uses on the property were, seeing as we tried to do the environmental impact statement based on historical uses.
Well, let's wait till we see, till, till it gets written up. Once it gets written up, then we can, we can have a discussion further on that. But until we have the final, final chapter written, I think it's, it's kind of where, not know, we're not knowing what we're talking about exactly.
That's, I'm just, I'm just putting my thoughts out there before the draft is done.
I understand that.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you bringing that up, because that is something that we have to be mindful of.
Yep.
I know there was also some discussion about having a, an inter-agency type of communication involved, and I think that's kind of what we're going to call it, as opposed to an MOU.
Yeah, I agree, I think it's much better.
So I think it's going to be something that's going to identify concerns that a particular part of the town government has, without any directive to the other boards, because of course, the planning board and the zoning board of appeals have an independent authority under New York State law, and they have different issues that they're dealing with. The zoning board is obviously dealing with variances, whether they be area or use variances, which is different than a special criteria, which is before you, which is different than a site plan criteria, which might be before a planning board. But again, the idea is to have that chain of communication, that open communication, so that as part of that review, we have the ability for each of the boards to be aware of certain concerns that you may have.
And it streamlines the process, so that people aren't going back and forth.
That's the hope.
Correct?
Yeah, that's the goal.
And, 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 you know, looking at, at this with doing what you had, it, it would be kind of be following this, but as, as a project, say, goes, say you have a commercial building, it's going with it for the town board or planning board, there would be just some, some brief of what, what happened at, at each one of these, these meetings, so that if it did then go through SECRE and ended up with the ARB, or landmarks preservation, or it's at the ZBA, there's sort of a record of everything that happened before that, without having to go through all the meetings that the other, that the other boards had, or, or that the committees had, and, and you'd be able to follow it, and you could ask questions if need be, or you'd just be able to have sort of an, an update of where the project is along this, what do you call these things?
Flowchart.
Flowchart. Along the flowchart, you'd see where, see what happened in, in the other parts of the flowchart before it got to you.
And if we really get super high-tech, you know, we could have one of these really smart computer programs where you could, on a specific application, you could click on a box and see where they are in relationship to that box. It's a type one action, you can see the date, the resolution number, what have you, that's sent to the other agency, so you can, know where, an applicant in the public would know where in the process that applicant stood. We're not there yet, we're getting there.
We're getting there. We have something on paper, so...
This is on paper.
Jumping back to the flowchart, and I'm sorry to cut you short.
That's okay.
One thing that popped into my head that you, you may want to add on, because it's something that all applicants should be a little bit mindful of, SWIP.
Okay.
As that's, that's the SWIP.
A stormwater pollution plan.
That's something that obviously is a concern to you, to make sure that their SWIP plan has been submitted and reviewed and approved, because it's something that's obviously going to be one of the roadblocks to going forward.
Right.
So that should be probably somewhere on that chart as well.
And I think just to, to your point also, as, as we start to use this chart, if there are things that you find that's not being addressed in here, or a place that it has to go, that we haven't put here, please, you know, just bring it, bring it back to our attention, so that we can address it and make it as comprehensive as possible.
And I see that this is done on SmartDraw, I guess that's an app that you downloaded, or...
Well, the reason the watermark's there is that I wasn't able to, our system wouldn't let me, without administrative approval, you know, actually have the full trial. So I was able to manipulate it enough to get this printed out, but I thought it was a very useful little program.
Yeah, but I would just like to tell the board that the software that we're looking at for the workflow program, that once you fill out one of these boxes, and it's a coordinated review, emails automatically go out to all the involved agencies. So once you click the button, send, anybody that is supposed to be attached to those emails will all get it. They're clicked off as to who should be getting this, and then we, those responses come in, and as those responses come in, the check marks come off the boxes. So I think that the workflow program that is connected with the BAS system and the IPS is very important. It's the last component of putting the software package together and something that we should be budgeting for.
I, I agree with you. I think Jeff has made the champion for, for having a program in there. Quite clearly, I know that, I mean, I'm still working with, with Sean Walter's budget, the budget you guys had last year, it's not in there for this year, but it certainly is something, I think, that would facilitate this process and, and the planning department and building department moving forward. So, um, we definitely will be looking at that and hoping to put that in for next year, if at some point this year.
I think it's a great progressive move. And I, I really do like what you were saying, Jeff, about that at some point you're able to actually click on the project and see the, the process and it so far, because that's much easier than going back through your emails and finding...
Or picking the phone to the administrator, going, Jeff, where is the application review process? And I have to go talk to a planner, go pull up the file, and find out where it is.
That's nice, because it's automatically date stamped, you know, recorded, and so there's no miscommunication, there's nothing misplaced, so it's kind of like where it needs to be.
And Jeff, did you want to leave you anything else?
On this, oh, no, I only, we're probably going to need a larger sheet of paper.
Going to need a big stamp?
And I do like the back, because when you click on one, it'll show you options of where you may have to go.
Right.
Depending on certain things. I mean, the flowchart's nice, but...
But who would have access to this?
Pardon me?
Who has access to this?
This, right, I just, just me. I just drafted it for purposes of discussion, so... so we could, you know, look at the process, figure out where we wanted to add or what we wanted to change.
I tried another.
But how would it all be connected?
Well, the next, the next step that we're going to do is we're gonna wait to to finish the chapter two twenty five. Um, once, once we get that, once we get that done, that will come back to the board. And when we have that in place, then we will, we'll begin to start to figure out how we're implementing these things. So probably what we'll do is we'll pick two or three trial projects between now, after that's written, two or three trial projects. We'll start two or three trial projects with this flowchart, see if there's things that need to be tweaked, and and we'll tweak them over those couple of projects. Once those projects are completed, then we will, we will go to figure out how we're implementing this fully, whether it's at this point on paper, or whether it's through a program. Um, you know, these are largely steps, I mean, these are really what we're doing already. Um, but we're just tightening up the whole thing so that it works well, and there's not a lot of gray areas to to the flow of it.
Yeah, I just, I'm trying to.
So it's a work in progress.
Understand how it's going to be, how this diagram is going to be put into a network where all of us and all of them can click on a button and see where our project is.
Well, stay tuned, because that's what we're working on. Um, so, so thank you all for for such a great job. I think this is really good stuff coming out from the tri board meeting. Um, and once we get the chapter two twenty five done, and maybe do one project.
I think the chapter two twenty five is gonna come back to you for some input first.
Absolutely.
You may have some additional things that you wanna add in.
Yep.
Before we actually, you know, go to public hearing.
And then once we do that, before we do that also, we'll have another tri board meeting. Um, and just have, you know, we'll review everything that we've come up to at this point, um, and have a, have a, have a discussion so that we're all on the same page and we all have input into it, so.
Very good.
Another tri board meeting, but this time we're working.
Yeah, but go to a bigger speed, so we can all see. So, thank you all very, very much. Great job.
Hi, Jeff.
Good job. Go back to work. What are you doing here? You're not getting anything done sitting here.
You guys are still here? The next one is the special permit for fifteen thirty five Route fifty eight LLC.
And I'd also like to, uh, we can bring in two oh one, two thirteen East Mason Street at the same time, because it's not really a presentation of the applications. This does tell us quite nicely into discussion Chris had with the flowchart.
Okay.
Uh, we have two applications for special permits pending before you. Uh, the first one is fifteen thirty five Route fifty eight. It's a gas station, restaurant, and it's a retail space in the corner of Plasky Street and Route fifty eight. You know it by its old remaining barn and wooded area on Route fifty eight.
Wilson property, right?
Quarter of Plasky and what?
Not to interrupt, but but Jeff, you said gas station, so car wash.
Car wash. Yeah, car wash and wood. Car wash, restaurant, and.
Right, you said gas station.
You said gas station.
Car wash.
Car wash.
At this point, the only thing that we're advising with the board today is you you do have a staff report that was dated February first. If if you don't have it, let me know, and we'll send it around again. Uh, the applicant has also had a, uh, got a, gotten a copy of this. This application, and then the next application, let me tell you about the next application first, and I'll tell you why we're here today. Is two oh one, two thirteen East Mason Street. That's Rob Munchenix's property. It's the former Sears building site that's been demolished. They're in for an application for approximately one hundred and seventy apartments with, uh, ground floor retail space. Both these applications need to start the secret process in terms of, they're both, um, the fifteen thirty fives are an enlisted action. We're recommending coordinated review. And the, uh, the two oh one, two thirteen is a type one action that mandates coordinated review. So we'd like, we're gonna have a resolution for both of those applications, not for Tuesday meeting, if we couldn't get the resolutions done in time. So we'll have it for you for the first meeting in April, for both of those, that's gonna start the thirty day clock for leaded to see coordination.
So we have a full site plan application on that project?
It was made last year.
And with the changes that Tim, you were proposing for the parking district, the zoning changes, I mean, where are we with that?
We are, we are, we are okay with that, because the, the, we have on one of the resolutions today is for a public hearing, uh, to call for changing, uh, the parking for for downtown, um, to include them in the town parking schedule for residential uses. Um, and that, that, uh, resolution calls for anybody who has not received a, uh, building permit would fall under it. So that would not interfere with this. None of these projects have have, uh, building permits. So, uh, if the public does come out and speak, and then, and then we pass that resolution, they would be, uh.
So they would require to have their own parking on site?
Correct.
So do the applicants know that?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
I don't see that resolution.
There's, there's, no, the resolution.
It was last meeting.
Yeah, then the public hearing is, because we had four public hearings last meeting, so we did it for this meeting, Tuesdays. So yes, they would fall underneath that.
And that's it?
Okay.
That was great, Jeff. Good way. Sorry about your head, bro.
Yeah, smarts.
Yeah, I know, I shouldn't have rubbed it. I got a little, my fingers.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry. The hell came up. I got it. You got it?
It's hot in here. It's cold in here.
All right, um, just the one thing that I wanted to update, uh, well, just remind everybody, and and Jim, we had talked about this yesterday for Newcastle, uh, for the telephone system. Today is the last time Total Tech was here. We had asked them within thirty days to review our system and come back and report to us. So today is the end of the thirty days, so we'll ask them to come next work session and report off any of their findings. And then we can figure out what we wanna do, uh, moving forward with Newcastle.
With the void.
So, okay?
Thank you.
Uh, so we will move on to resolutions. Uh, we have it with the S W one. Resolution one is C D, C D B G Recovery Aid Project Number sixteen nine fifteen Budget Adjustment.
Very good. Yay, put your money back in there.
Yeah. Uh, resolution number two is E E A C Benjamin Benjamin Barn Renovation Project. Uh, and this was a grant that went to, uh, engineering fees.
Was that, was that from Stewardship? Okay, yeah, Stewardship.
That was, I think they were doing, they were just, um.
Yeah, no, I know.
I think they had to do the engineering, cause they wanted to do some renovations on that.
Yeah, I know the owner of Stewardship.
Yeah.
He's a good guy.
Um, ten thirty five Pulaski Street, uh, final change order for roof replacement water, water capital project, number thirty one forty five, budget adoption. This is what we spoke about for the, uh, roof replacement. Uh, number four is budget, budget adjustment buildings grounds for truck. This is the truck that, uh, Ernesto and Drew came and spoke to us about.
Correct.
Um, they did do.
Multitasking.
There is not a, uh, we're not required for fiscal impact statements. Uh, they did do one, um, so there are some adjustments that would need to be, uh, made for this for your view. But we had them try to do it this week, just so we could get a start, and people could begin, um, getting familiar with it before it goes into place for the next meeting. So if you have any questions about that, just let me know, and we can get that straightened out. Uh, number five is water district budget adjustment due to insurance recovery. Number six is authorized acceptance of Suffolk County Downtown Revitalization Round Fifteen Grant for the Jamesport LED Lights. I know they've been working on this for a year, more than a year. I think I started with this with them over there. So I'm very happy to see that, uh, grant going through.
Yeah, I've been, um, getting a lot of questions and concerns and complaints, actually, from downtown from the LED lighting, saying that it's not bright enough, and that it's not providing as much light as the previous lights did.
Here in Riverhead, not.
Here in Riverhead, but now we're switching to LED in Jamesport, and I'm just hoping that we're not gonna have the same problem.
This is, it's, I actually, Drew is not here. I I can find that out for you, because I did go to him, and he gave me the wattage on it, because it's, the bulb seemed to be dimmer. Um, but there's, there's the Kelvin, the three thousand, four thousand Kelvin, which is just the warmth of the light. But I don't know with those lights, if there's just not as much sort of illumination coming out of them. I I think this is, yeah, you can ask to walk over, but I think this is not, they, what they did is the downtown revitalization grant is actually providing for the poles, to redo the poles that are there and put the lights in. This question, I think, is more a question for engineering.
Right.
So what we'll do is the next work session, we'll have just Drew come and explain it, because it is dark downtown.
It is.
Yeah, and the, and the ampage, you know, the poles have to be adequate enough to handle the ampage.
Well, I don't think it's that. I think it's, it's, I think, I think engineering, we did speak to them. I I think it was a matter of redesigning the globe that's in there for refraction. I think it was something as simple as that.
I think we need to have him take a look at it, come back and tell us. I don't really have the answer for that.
I just don't wanna make the same mistake twice. That's all.
Oh, no. Don't think twice.
Uh, resolution, I know, Jimmy, you're dying the same today, huh? Resolution awards a bid for the annual construction contract. This is here, and the bids are here, but this is the one that needs to be, we put this in here because there's a lot of information. We wanted you to be able to di- digest it. But the way it's written, the resolution itself, needs to be corrected, because I believe that there are, forget, it's eleven or thirteen awards, because they chunk them out.
Yep.
Um, and in the resolution, it should say who was given award one, award two, award three. Um, and that's not quite clear in the way this was written. So ju- just the resolution itself will be changed, clearing that, clearing that up. But the doc- documentation that you have with you, behind it, shows who everybody will, what, who will be receiving the award. So it's just a clarification in the language of this one before it comes, and we'll have that to you Friday before, tomorrow.
Cause I had a question on page four hundred and thirty.
Keep going, cause I have one on a thousand twenty three.
Well, this is, this is, this is a question.
I can answer both.
This is a question for the board.
Thank you, Jeff.
Prior, they had been just giving Drew, they have been, um, just summarizing the last two bids. Do you want to see all the bids that we received that have been opened?
No.
No, I don't need to see all of them.
Okay, so that, so we will just give you the top two bids for comparison?
I gotta, I gotta trust the staff to go ahead.
Yeah.
No, that's fine. We, I just didn't know what everybody wants.
I agree.
All right, so, so top two, we're gonna do, um, and then we'll go from there. So you don't have to go through so much. Let me know when you're through.
I, I found it.
All right.
I got it. My fingertips relaxed.
The next one is number eight. I don't know if that helps going through.
Oh, I know. This is another one.
I think so, yeah.
Annual procurement.
She runs a great office.
You're not getting older.
One forty.
That's right. Physical therapy for my thumb here. Of eight. Okay, I know. You there?
Yeah.
Okay. Number eight is awards, uh, bid for annual procurement contract.
Start scrolling.
Now, it has four names on there, so those are all the people that bid it. So you're saying that the resolution will indicate who actually was the lowest bidder?
Well, no, they all, all won a bid, but the way it works is that it's chunked out.
Okay.
So it's, it's, um.
Okay, I I like the idea of putting that in the resolution, so who was awarded what.
Yeah, exactly.
We ever had a bid, I I was talking to Diane about this yesterday. A bid that went out, came back with no bidders. And then obviously we rebid, but it could come back with no bidders again.
It's always that, the chlorine, the chlorine thing always comes back.
At one point in time, if we didn't get any bidders, then we would be able to purchase.
From the state contract.
Off the state contract. We wouldn't have to be, obviously, we don't have a bid to go off of. Has that ever happened to you, norther?
I think it's those lime tablets.
I was gonna say, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of competition in lime calc.
There's one, there's one tablet I know that always, always gets, and then you rebid, rebid, rebid. I think it's been gone out two or three times sometimes.
I think the county chair will take a lot, care about that, so.
Yeah. All right, uh, resolution number nine authorizes, uh, authorization of town supervisor to execute final change orders number two for water district roof replacement. So that's just updating the original re- resolution to include the increase.
Okay.
And number ten is authorized publication of a health wondered advertisement attendance at Suffolk County Police Academy. All right, this is the first I'm seeing.
It's report times, yep.
Is that what this one is?
Yeah, people wanna put themselves report on it, can't they?
Okay. Um, except a re- accepts a retirement of police sergeant. This is, uh, Brian Gleason.
Oh, boy.
Um, he was, he actually had put his letter in and is just, um, moving it forward a little bit to March, March thirtieth, so.
Very good. I remember him very personally on the job.
Um, and then this is authorization to publish, uh, advertisement for townwide printing. Um, this is things like some of the bills, beach stickers, things like that. Um, thirteen adopts a local order, increased salary of town highway superintendent for two thousand eighteen fiscal year, subject to progressive referendum.
What would be, impact statement on that?
Jim, didn't?
We can do an impact statement on that if you like.
I'm curious.
Jim, didn't you have some, you were looking into the municipal garage, and you were doing some research on this, and you said that you were going to discuss it at work session, so are you prepared to discuss that, or are you prepared to vote on it?
I I think when you're dealing with personnel and restructuring, I don't think an open work session is the place to have it. Especially when you're talking about particular employees. So if we can talk about it in executive work, like.
Okay, but I thought it was the matter of management of the municipal garage and whether or not you.
Well, what, if you talk about things, and you bring all of that up, and they wanna talk about it in executive session, then it becomes open session. So you have to do one or the other. Either we put it into executive session, or we talk about it in open session.
No, when you're talking about a personnel matter, and you're talking about a person's name.
But you're talking about a particular person, a person for a particular job.
An elected official, and which is different than a union employee, in my opinion.
Well, I thought restructuring with union.
No, but you're not, but is that, that, Jim, you're asking Jim a question. He's saying it's something he doesn't wanna discuss out here.
Yeah, cause I'm, I'm very specific.
It's a personal, it's a personnel item. He would like to discuss it in executive session. So if you would like to, if you, if you keep asking him questions, that he will be, it becomes a public session, and then you're talking about a particular employee.
Not if he doesn't answer the questions. I can ask the questions.
Okay, so then what is your question?
So, the next question that I have, or the the statement that I received, was that he, this can't be done by a stipend, because he's an elected official, and there are elected officials that receive stipends, so.
Which, which elected official is?
Tim Hubbard receives a stipend for being the deputy supervisor, and Laverne, Laverne Tenenbaum receives a stipend for being the chair, chairwoman of the assessor review board. So why can't it be done as a stipend?
I'll have Ann Marie come to answer.
Because I really have concerns that if Geo is no longer the highway superintendent, that this salary is going to be expected to be received by a new highway superintendent that's running for office.
Not unless that highway superintendent is gonna do the same job.
No, no, because when you.
Vote on this highway superintendent's salary every single January.
No, when you advertise that you are going to run for highway superintendent, or for supervisor, or for town board, that this is what your salary will be. You know that before you put your papers in to run for office, but the salary is.
Well, anybody who's running for office just for the salary.
I'm just saying you know what the salary is before you run for office. So, this salary will be posted as that's the salary of the highway superintendent.
No, it sunsets, it sunsets December thirty first.
I, I.
We'll have Ann Marie come in to answer the question.
I, I just think it's gonna be really hard to.
Let's go on to the next resolution.
Yeah, it is, it is, uh, right, by by local law, it can only be for a one year period. That, that we know, cause that's what the, the state law says. So we know that it can't be a permanent part of the salary. It's gonna be an attachment that has to be going on year after year after year for that issue responsibility. My only concern with it is, well, I don't wanna get too much into it, but I have just a hard time with elected officials that are, who's accountable to who, that's all.
And and why can't it be done as a stipend?
Uh, we have Ann Marie here, and we will ask.
I'm not so sure. All I know is, well.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
That was quite speedy.
What I know, what I wanna say, I can't.
The question is whether other elected officials are receiving stipends, such as, as Tim is the deputy, and Laverne Tenenbaum. And and Geo is not being listed as a stipend, so could you please address that?
Okay, sure. With respect to the deputy supervisor position, under the law, under the provisions of town law, and don't quote me, I think it's section forty two, it specifically provides that a sitting town board member may take also the role of deputy supervisor and must receive compensation, not may, must.
Okay.
Okay?
Can that compensation be given as a stipend?
You can call us, I know we've discussed this before, and we have a great debate. You can call it whatever you want. The reality of it is, it's compensation, it's money.
Okay, so it can be called a stipend.
Okay. You can call it a stipend.
Mm-hmm.
But that doesn't change the law, the legal requirement for the highway superintendent to have a local law clearly describing to the public that the elected official and his quote, "compensation" that was listed in the preliminary budget has or will be increased.
But it could say by a stipend of twenty thousand dollars a year.
Well, it's just.
It's disingenuous, it's disingenuous to the public, and it is, it, I worded it, the way I worded it, to be consistent with the law and the language of the opinions.
Okay.
They don't favor you calling it anything other than letting the public know he's receiving more compensation than what was set forth in the preliminary budget.
So do we have that resolution for Laverne?
So I, truthfully, I have no knowledge regarding Laverne. I will gladly look into that for the town board, if somebody gives me information. I did provide the law with respect to the deputy supervisor position. If you require it now, I can run back to my office and get it.
No, no, it's okay. I get it.
But I, I promised this town board that I researched that issue in depth, because it would appear that would be different from the highway superintendent, which it is.
Right.
Statutorily. Statutorily.
So when it says that the deputy supervisor must receive a stipend, that could be a penny a month, or it could be.
It doesn't say stipen, the law never talks about stipends.
I mean, I'm sorry. Okay.
Because the reality of it is, under the law, a stipend is additional monetary compensation.
Right.
It's almost like, I don't want to say it's this fictitious term out there, but the reality of it is you're paying somebody more money.
So it could be a penny, it could be fifty cents, where it says statutorily that you have to pay the deputy supervisor.
That's why if Councilman Hubbard, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe if you had your druthers, you would have preferred no compensation.
Correct.
But in order for me to correctly advise the supervisor and members of the town board, I had to quote, recite for them that you're, the law says you shall, you shall, not may receive, shall.
So it could have been a penny a year. It could have been a penny a year, instead it's twelve hundred a year.
Correct.
Well, in all fairness, I appreciate you giving half your stipend back for the bagels tomorrow.
So anyway.
It's breakfast once a month.
Half of one month of stipend, but.
Thank you, Tim.
Yes, I am, okay, that's right, yeah.
So, so, in, in, in addressing what, what Jody's concern is, so in the, what we're adopting here, what is it that you're asking to see?
Oh, so, so I know.
See that it's the stipend for the management of the municipal garage, and I want to know how we're gonna pay for it, because municipal garage is a general fund service, and we have to come up with twenty thousand dollars on how to pay for it. And I asked you how you're gonna pay for it, so how are you gonna pay for it?
And we have bill rung around here.
Okay, so can I just?
Bill, don't get too caught up.
Yes, that's, that's what Ann Marie said.
A little bit more.
Can we call it a stipend?
You call it a stipend. You love that word, use the word.
Yeah. Yeah, and I honestly.
You use it, whatever you want to call it, it's good for you. Nobody really cares.
I, I just want any highway superintendent, or anybody that's thinking about running for highway superintendent, let it be a stipend.
Okay, I. Right. I not only researched the statutory law, state comptroller opinions, attorney general opinions, then I went and I pulled resolutions and local laws from other government entities wherein this occurred, because it's not uncommon for a town or village to assign a highway superintendent additional duties, probably because state statute allows for a town board to assign a highway superintendent additional duties provided that those duties do not in any way interfere with those duties set forth under highway law. So I could show you a plethora of towns where they have highway superintendents take over sanitation, they take over municipal garage, they, you know, various different roles. In all of those, in all of those, it's compensation. The language is compensation.
I get it. I get it. My question is taxing district. A lot of those smaller towns, they move those services into the highway taxing district.
So.
So Ann Marie, you've got.
Okay.
Right.
This is a whole separate taxing district.
Yes.
So just to go further, and to be clear, this isn't forever. This.
Well.
Exactly.
Well, it's not, it was not.
But that's where we have the board. We have the option to do this. We're giving ourselves the option to do this until the end of the year to see if it works out or it doesn't work out. And then we, as the town board, can say, yes, great, or no, lousy idea. But it's, it's trying something that is not functioning well, does not have good oversight, is, is in need of, of somebody to oversee this, to bring this department up to where it should be and what it's doing. The people there are doing a, a heck of a job, but they're having a hard time without having the appropriate supervision to run it correctly. I mean, the department's been audited twice, and it still has.
What did we talk about?
And we fixed all of those audit issues. We fixed all of that.
It still has those issues after the audit. It still has its spare issues after the audit. So this is a, a, and this doesn't even take effect till like April. So it's a six to seven month window that you're agreeing to
Even after forty-five days, so it's more than April.
To see if it will better the town, because he can't take it once it's approved for forty-five days after that.
Correct.
So it's, it's.
Pending, pending any petitions.
Pretending, pretending anything else. So it's just an opportunity to see if we can make something a little better in this town that is, is needs some oversight and is not functioning to the best of its ability in this town. I mean, it's eight months.
But I have questions, because I know G O's talking about bringing in county vehicles to the municipal garage and doing.
I'm sorry, say that again?
G O's talking about bringing county vehicles, Suffolk County vehicles, into the municipal garage and working on those county vehicles.
As part of shared services, that we approved a couple of months ago.
As part of shared services. So what happens if, in our few days that we have, we have all county vehicles on and we have police cars that come in? I want to see the operational agreement.
That's why we have a supervisor there instead of bringing in county cars when nobody's there to oversight and direct it. That's why you have to.
G O is gonna be out on the roads, looking out for the safety of the roads of our residents, which is what he was elected to do. He should not be in the municipal garage, making sure that county cars come off the lift so our police cars can go on them.
Well, he won't, he won't.
I, I want to see the operational chart. Jim asked for it a couple of weeks ago. Where is the operational chart?
Do you have more of these, please? This is, you asked for the job description.
I don't.
No, I want to know, I want to know the procedures. When the county vehicles are up on the lift, what's gonna happen, and how long our cops are gonna be sitting there waiting for their cars to be fixed.
We have no county vehicles coming in at this time.
Yeah, but that's what he's gonna work on.
But that's what the compensation is for, to put somebody in there that is able to make those decisions, to make those determinations, because the people that are in there right now don't really feel comfortable taking that authority on and making that, those type of decisions. And that's what a supervisor, a superintendent does. That's what somebody in charge makes those decisions to make a department function well and appropriately to the best, a best ability for what's the best, most benefit to the town.
You're talking about bringing county vehicles into the town municipal garage. I have a, a very big concern about that.
So, so. I, no, but here's the beautiful part. I, I understand it and respect it.
And I have a problem with the highway superintendent being in the, I want to finish my statement, and then she can answer.
Ann Marie was talking first.
No, I wasn't finished.
No, you interrupted her. Let her finish first.
No, I wasn't finished. No, I'm gonna finish.
Go right ahead, Jody.
So I have a problem with the highway superintendent who's elected to take care of the roads in this town, spending time in the municipal garage figuring out what cars should be on the lifts.
And, Jody, I don't know why you're arguing with Ann Marie. Ann Marie's here to provide advice, a legal advice from our department, and you're arguing with her instead of talking to the town board.
I want to know.
So Ann Marie, please finish now.
So I, I just want, I understand your concerns. I think they're valid. I really do. I will tell this town board I have, I think, a good amount of knowledge regarding shared services. I am assuring this board that before any county vehicle comes into our municipal garage, you will, you as a board, will have approved an agreement regarding that. Why? Because even under the shared services agreement and plan, things such as working on vehicles are going to require this town board to agree to the compensation, to the scheduling. It's not, it doesn't happen just because we entered into the shared services. It requires an additional agreement, because I can tell you right now, we're gonna require that not only do they pay our employees their quote, "going rate," they're also gonna provide insurances to us, like we typically do in an intermunicipal agreement. So there is nothing in the, uh, shared services agreement which permits us to move forward on something like that without coming before this town board. Can't do it.
I have, I have a few concerns, but you know what, I.
The title is incorrect on this, so.
I, I don't like the title. I don't like, I am, I am the department liaison to the highway, to the municipal garage right now, as far as I know. This is, he'll act as department liaison.
The title is incorrect. Can I tell you, this was, this was just written up. I just, this hasn't been viewed completely, so.
And I just got municipal garage, so that's why I'm a little sensitive about it. If I had it for three years, I don't care, but that, I just got it a couple of months ago, so.
Which number is that? Which bullet point is that?
I don't know if I remembered. Where it says access department liaison, number five, I guess, but.
Okay, that's fine.
I just, I just have, like, my concerns are a few.
You're correct on that.
I don't know whether, if, if these conditions at the town garage are as dire as they say, I know a lot of it had to do with, I, I, and you won't agree with me, but I think a lot of it had to do with the fact that we ripped clerical staff out of there. That really is the glue that holds a lot of these departments together when it comes to paperwork and that, and, and all that stuff, and billing, and inventory, and all those things that seem to be lacking down there. I think, but now that we've got at least somebody down there a couple of days a week, that's gonna, I think a lot of it's gonna clear up. I think clerical staff is very important. And we sort of like cut them short when we ripped Jan out, when Jan retired, and we never really filled it in. I, I think they do, but it's, it's as dire as it's said. I really think you need, I don't know, their part-time oversight is, is, is enough to date the time, that's all.
And, and we also gave a eight thousand dollar raise to somebody in the municipal garage to manage this, and I think he's doing a good job.
And as far as, as far as. As far as shared services go, I don't know any county vehicle's gonna come here for a hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour to get model change.
Okay, I'm, I'm just gonna ask you, I don't know if you feel.
I'll stand corrected. Well, I'll stand corrected, um, you know, again, don't quote me on it, but to my knowledge, we were unaccounted for, uh, six hundred and eighty gallons of fuel.
Correct.
That was before the audit?
Nope, after. That was last year.
No. No.
This was after the last audit.
And, and ju- just to be clear, this.
We don't have any clerical.
No, that was after the audit and after the, the, the second audit also.
But we don't have any clerical there, and I agree with Jim. If you had somebody there doing the clerical on a daily basis.
No, the sticks were done. The sticks were done every single day.
On a daily basis.
Yes. We are complying with the stick.
Ann Marie, was that in my own? So then why didn't we know about it sooner if they were done every day?
I believe it's six hundred and eighty gallons.
It was reported off to this board by Larry Levy.
It was reported to the entire board by Larry Levy last year.
At a work session, at a work session, Jody.
Every, every day he does the stick, and six hundred and eighty gallons were missing in one day?
And he report, no, not in one day, but he reported off to the board before we came on that that was missing, at a work session.
Okay, but if he's doing it every day, then how do we not know that gallons are missing on a daily basis, and it just comes up that there's six hundred and eighty gallons missing?
That's, that's the question. That's our concern.
So, and that's my concern with having a, someone that's part, full-time in the supervisor's office and part-time at the municipal garage, that, keeping track of these things. And that's why I think it's important to replace the clerical person in the municipal garage and have them manage it.
But the clerical person has, the clerical person sticks the tanks, and you get the report of the tanks. There is no, there is no follow-up after that is missing, because there's no oversight at the garage. So you, you can continue to report missing gallons, gallons, but there's not, there is nothing that then happens with that information. Case in point, they came, they, they, you know, it was done here, and then there was no, there's no follow-up from it.
I'll give you that.
Because there's nobody, there's nobody in place, in charge of following it up.
My only, I really, Laura, one hundred thousand percent, maybe you do need somebody there for that type of oversight. I'm not sure that the part-time oversight that you're talking about is, is, is enough really to cut the mustard, to be honest with you.
But I think this is the most reasonably priced thing to do for a short period of time to see if it works.
You think twenty grand, that's, I.
It's about thirteen, or less than that.
Well, because it's way halfway through the year, it's about, actually, it's eleven thousand seven dollars, actually.
And it's only for one year to evaluate.
Right. And truthfully, you do get to evaluate it, and if there are no savings or improvements.
The only thing I want to say, you know, you know where I stand on it, because it, it has nothing to do with who it is or what they are. It deals with elected officials and who they're accountable to. That's my biggest concern. But the other thing is, it's not, it's not the money. It's about making it, I really think that the municipal garage really does have, it's a, it's a cost center. It's a general taxpayer cost center, not a highway district cost center. So I, I, it, now you're commingling districts. I, it just, the whole thing just, just doesn't make sense to me. Now, I don't mind the oversight. I think it can be done.
What did the previous board not fill Jan's position?
Why?
Right.
I, I think they were.
Because there were stipends given to the engineering department that was overseeing it.
Well, there was some stipends for oversight with, with engineering. There was, we did have a floater that we were using, an employee that was floating down there, similar to what we're doing now.
Or what we're proposing to do now.
Does that where the problem started with the gallons missing?
No, we have somebody there two, two days a week already.
Uh, no, that was the tail end. We had numerous egregious, egregious problems prior to that, including vehicles, um, reported being on lifts wherein, uh, they weren't quote, town-related vehicles. The ordering of parts.
And that's why we got the cameras, that's why we got the key fobs.
For vehicles that were not town-related, yet those parts were quote, getting the non-tax benefit of the municipality.
We dealt with that.
But, uh, you, you can sit here guaranteed, know that it's all been dealt with.
Yes.
I don't give any guarantees, first of all, and nor should you.
And I think the residents have a right to know this. Thank you.
But I'm telling, I'm telling you right now. I want to see an action plan. I don't want to see what is, is, whatever happening is.
Well, if you, if you would like an action plan, then what you would like to do.
Do you tell me an action plan? What, what is your plan? G O, I don't want to give you twenty thousand dollars extra and put you a couple of dollars underneath the supervisor as far as annual salary. That's not the case. It's not about the money. You show me an action plan exactly how you're gonna address these issues and what you're gonna do differently, right off the bat.
But the first thing that you hire a supervisor or you put somebody in place to do is to go in and assess. I mean, that's, that's part of this.
Well, it looks like that's been done. That's how you're justifying the position. So you already assessed it?
We know, we know that there's a problem. What the, what the root of all of those problems are, I do not know clearly. And you're the liaison, but you're the liaison, you're in here, you're the liaison as long as I'm the supervisor, and we don't have a clear handle on what's going on.
And I'm telling you, a part-time oversight is not the way to go.
I think everybody's raised a lot of concerns about this. I think if anybody has more questions for Ann Marie, I think it's on a resolution.
I want somebody to hang on a tree, not somebody to talk down to.
I do, I don't think this resolution is ready to be adopted yet.
Well, we have, we, we did the public hearing. We can bring the resolution through. We can vote on it, and it will, we, you know, we can voice our concerns, and we'll see which way the vote goes.
Well, you will.
Well, out of respect for your fellow board members that have concerns about it and want to see an action plan and maybe have a different plan that might work better than this.
I would love to see the different plan. I haven't seen that, and I've asked for the different plans several times. You know that.
I think that you should pull the resolution. I don't know why it has, the resolution has to be adopted the first town board meeting after the public hearing, when you, your, two of your board members have concerns about it.
Do you think what would make you change your concerns?
Well, I'd like to hear what Jim has to say as the liaison to the municipal garage.
We'll, we'll, we'll have a frank discussion, what, what, some of the, and I don't want to be specific, but some of the action plan that I had has already been somewhat undermined a little bit, torpedoed a little bit in the weeks since I brought it up. So I'll bring up those concerns up in executive session, that's all.
And, and I'm also, um.
But I don't know, the action plan is not executive session. Is there, is there, is there, is there?
No, no, that action plan, it should, I mean.
It should be here. He asked for it a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
No, you asked for, you asked for a job, a job description, and that's what I gave.
Well, maybe it wasn't.
I was not asked for an action plan. I was not asked for an action plan. And an action plan is very difficult to get and assess.
No, I wasn't. I wasn't.
Can I just interrupt a minute, Tim? Didn't you say you talked, um, didn't you bring up the meetings, and can you talk about that a little bit?
I spoke to G O about his action plan, and I recommend all the board members do the same. I, I also now, after hearing all this bantering going back and forth over and over and over again, why don't we just bring G O in and have him talk to us about his action plan?
Well, that would be nice, because it's the simplest thing to do during a work session. He has, he, we're here. There's some board members he'll speak to, and there's some he will not. There's some he needs, and there's some he just doesn't care about, so.
Did you call him to ask to speak to him?
He's looking for something from us.
No, 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 but, no, I'm, I'm just ask, I'm not accusing you of it.
Can I call him? No, I could tell you who he did speak to. Wasn't me.
But did you, I'm asking if you gave a call to him to speak to him? Okay, so, but you're saying he won't speak to you, but you didn't give a call. So I'm just, just, that's my point.
Well, because you know what, it, it's important if you want to come in and you want this town law that only the town board can grant for whether you call it a stipend, or you call it additional salary, or additional responsibilities, which is worth money. I told you that's worth money. I think it's probably worth, I mean, if it does a good job, it's probably worth more than that. Don't you think in some fashion it would behoove him to come speak to all the board?
We can request him to. I have not requested him. I have not asked, and nobody has.
You should have to request.
But nobody has asked, asked for him to come before the board. Tim has just suggested it. I don't think it's a terrible suggestion. We can certainly ask him to come do that. And what would you like him to present as an action plan?
I mean, if he's comfortable, if he's comfortable with a three-two vote, then that's fine. But right now, he knows it's where the polls are lying.
And, and I would like to hear from Bill how we're gonna pay for it, number one, and I would like Bill to also come up and explain what we've done to correct the problems that Ann Marie just brought up when it came to the municipal garage.
Okay, that's, that's a different que, that's a different conversation. If you'd like to have another assessment of the municipal.
Why?
Because you can't just ask somebody to come up and say, okay, fix everything. They, they're not prepared to do this.
I asked you how you're gonna pay for it. Is he prepared to answer that?
Bill can answer that, yes.
Okay. And then I've spoken to Bill over the last couple of weeks about the audit that we got and how it was fixed, and he knows it like the back of his hand, so I'm sure he can tell us.
Well, I would prefer to have both audit reports here and to go through them piece by piece, instead of just saying, you know, what's your regulations?
Okay, let's do that.
If you'd like to go through the audit reports.
Let's do that, and let's find out how G O's gonna fix it.
Well, I will tell the town board, um, I did rewrite and demand, moving forward, any piece of equipment purchased on behalf of the town of Riverhead includes language that you have to, that the person quote, picking up the part, has to sign for it, and no cash payments.
Right, and that's being done.
Except, you asked in part.
I like Laura's idea. Let's get the audit reports and go through one by one, please.
Let, let's, Ann Marie.
I, I'm just responding in part because you asked, okay, what's been done. I can tell you from, one thing I did was revamp all those so people cannot come in.
Right.
Pay cash, town benefit, as if the town is. Pay cash, town benefit, as if the town is fine, so vendors from now on, no cash.
Yes, that was an issue about eighteen, about two years ago, I remember that, I remember the whole thing.
Yeah, me too.
Oh, I appreciate that, and it's important that we meant that, as we see.
It's a big issue, it's illegal.
You gotta, you gotta close the holes.
I mean, we, we had a cash box at the, at the, um, in the recreation department. We had a cash box where people were taking cash for beach stickers, we fixed that too. There were a lot of things, a lot of things, that's why we have.
I don't wanna belabor the point.
That's why we have internal audits, and then when we get the audits and they tell us that there's a problem, we fix it. And we fixed a lot of the issues with the municipal garage, so I'd like to go through the audit reports. Bill, if you could just tell us how we're gonna pay for this twenty thousand?
Just, a second, oh, Jody, just relax a second, because you're getting very argumentative with everybody. We're here discussing town business, so Bill, we have asked you previously for the, for the, uh, I know we had asked for a financial impact statement on this that we didn't do because we're not ready for that yet on this one, but the account that is coming from.
So, there's another salary line in the general fund that was over budgeted, so that's where we're gonna move, that's where we've moved the money, the money from, it's all in the general fund. This money has to be taxed to the general fund taxpayers, we can't take it from the highway fund, so to speak. So, there's money in another salary line in the general fund to move over.
So, the salary line that was overestimated, what salary line is that?
It's a recreation line, uh, we had budgeted for the same person in the recreation fund and in the general fund. By mistake, so they're not being paid at a general fund, they're being paid and doing work in the recreation fund.
Okay, so.
Hotel one hundred and six.
So, so going through our priorities of like, things that need to be done, like roofs need to be fixed and software that we need for the workflow program, and do, do you have a priority list as to if we get, find money like that?
Jody, that's what we do as a town board, and that's what we're having these discussions, and that's what we vote on. Because if we, that's how we decide our priorities, things come up, resolutions come up, and we vote to do them or not. We're the ones who pick the priorities.
So, what are the priorities as set forth by the town board? Is it to analyze the municipal garage and find out if there's a need for, to pay twenty thousand dollars for that? Or if we should use the twenty thousand dollar for the workflow software that will coordinate all the departments?
That's why we vote, that's why we vote.
Okay.
I'd certainly have no problem with the expenditure for additional monies for oversight at the town garage. I don't, especially if it is a core center and there's, you know, a few million dollars of gas disappearing every year that we don't know about.
There's none.
You know, then, we do need some sort of oversight, but I, I think it can be better, better structured than this, but, um, and that's a good cost of money, the twenty thousand, if it's down from a double salary hit, that's fine, I have no problem paying it. I think that's a great priority for that one, over one of all the other problems. And so you've got extra money for an extra employee, you know that, okay.
And how much is in that budget line?
Fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand, that's with benefits?
That's without benefits.
Okay, so what, I'd like to know what the carryout is, because maybe there's some money in there for the software program that we need to coordinate.
Spanish, from ten to two every day, five days a week.
Okay.
The other twenty thousand.
I say, okay.
If I could just make a quick comment, I know we don't wanna go through it, so we can do it another time, but as far as the municipal garage is concerned. The audit did show a lot of things that, most of them were fixed before the audit was even completed because the town was giving heads up on them. There are some things, and I know that Larry had replaced one pump last year, we have another one that we have to replace, and, um, there's money in the budget to do that, I'm not sure when we're going to do that, I think it's waiting to see what happens here. And the readings that are coming off, one pump is fine, um, the other pump every day goes up or down twenty or thirty gallons. And at the end of a certain period of time, I forget what it was, I can go back and check.
Is it a read or is it actual, is it a read or is it actual?
Well, it's, it's actually three things, they're dipping the tank, which sometimes if you dip it crooked, it can be off from one day to another, which means if that was the case, over time, the number would eventually still only be a couple of gallons. But that's not the case, and then, so it's that, and then you reconcile what's delivered, with what's delivered and what's taken out versus the computer that actually tells you how many gallons are in there. So, you're reconciling all three.
So, if we fix the pump, then we might get better readings.
We, we, we think that's the last piece, we, I mean, other than just reporting this every time we dip it and say it's off by twenty gallons, there, we've done everything else we could, there's no cars coming in, there's nothing like that happening, um, that we can see, uh, gas going, going out. Uh, so at this point, the fluctuations change, it can be up sixty gallons one day and down seventy the next.
And you think that has to do with the computer, like?
I'm not really sure, and, and I can check this year and see what the difference is.
It's unclear what the answer is.
Okay, but do we have money to replace that pump?
There, there's money, and, and I don't know the details, I can check with Larry and go through some of that stuff, uh, at, at a later time and see what the money is for and how, and what we're fixing it, but again, I think we should wait until this is decided to have that person also make it.
Yeah, but, I mean, the money might be better spent fixing that pump, if we're hiring oversight in the department because of six hundred and eighty gallons that have fluctuated, I think that we fix the pump, and then, if we're still having problems, then we plan on more oversight of the municipal garage.
I, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that most of these things were fixed even before the audit was done, and there's a couple of things that we're still working on, like I said, there was a pump replaced, and then we have another one that we have.
And inventory is still?
Inventories, inventory is fine.
Inventory is fine, everything's cross-checking from what you told me. Okay, and so, those were a couple of things that were on the audit report. What I've heard is that we need oversight, because there were six hundred and eighty gallons of gas that were missing, and now you're telling me that you think that it's up one day, it's down the next, there could be problems with the computer with the pump, it could be the way you stick, put the stick in, I can't even believe that we're still measuring fuel by sticking a stick in a tank.
The garage is correct.
But, Phil, Phil, are you, are you aware of the accuracy of the chargebacks?
Of the accuracy of, of the chargebacks?
So, if, if, um, P, PD were to bring in their vehicles, are you aware if a, a report is appropriately generated regarding?
Yes, yeah, well, there, the report is on an older system, we're actually moving that system over the next month or so. Um, and, and it actually takes that part out of inventory and says we paid six dollars for it, and it, so as far as.
And it generates a fill based on what our?
If, if, if a part is utilized, correct?
Yes.
If a part isn't utilized, but work is done on a vehicle.
Then it's just labor.
Right, so are you aware of the accuracy of the chargebacks regarding labor?
Well, I'm not aware of actually who worked those amount of hours, if that's what you're asking.
No, I'm asking whether or not.
It's all of the state.
Just one second.
Whether or not there's a checks and balances for what vehicles were worked on and charged back to the various departments, if they were or were not.
Um, well, as far as the check and balances, not from anybody outside the garage. So, for instance, if a mechanic one worked on this vehicle, that happens to be a police vehicle, whatever it may be, and he puts down that it was an hour and a half to do that job, then that gets, assuming it gets reviewed by Mike and winds up being approved, yes, it's approved, then that gets charged. So, um, all, all of, all of the work that gets done, all of the labor that gets put into this gets charged to a specific car when they're working on that car. Now, have I been there to see, or have any, anyone else outside the garage been there to see anything other than that? I, I'm not sure. So, I don't know who's verifying, I can check.
So, are you questioning whether or not labor is being done and it's not being filled out to individual departments?
Yeah, I'm just, well, ye- yes, I guess I am, because we have a history that Bill referred to earlier of that happening. I'm not saying it's currently happening, I'm saying that was one of the issues, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, of the garage being utilized for non-town related.
But that was.
But that wasn't on town time from, from, I.
And, and how did we address that, Bill?
We put, we, we.
Please.
We have, um, well, we have cameras, we have, uh, people have to sign in and sign out and close and set the alarm when they leave on a Friday night. From, from understanding what you're asking, this activity was being done on a weekend, not on town time, just going in there and performing those services, but no one was getting paid for that, so that wasn't being billed out.
And Mike checks the alarms now?
And, and the alarm, and the alarm is, is locked on Friday and opened again on Sunday. If there's a call out because there's a towing or something like that, there's a, a log sheet that says, you know, whoever came in and opened up the garage to get the tow truck and whatever else.
Now, who's in charge of that log sheet?
I'd have to check, I don't know the details, I know that Larry was in charge of reviewing that or knows who was in charge of doing that, last year, since January, I'm not sure who is, you know, I'm assuming it's the same person at the garage, I'm assuming it's Mike, but I don't wanna make assumptions, you know, on camera to say that this is who's doing that, we have to find that out.
Okay.
Can I say something? First of all, I think that this conversation is good, this is what we're here for. You know, I think we're all trying to look out for the town, and if we were all rubber stamping everything, that would be actually more of a problem. So, I'm okay with that we're having this discussion, but as a resident, it's, it is upsetting to me that this has been going on at the garage, and certainly it's something that we need to be addressed. So, my feeling is that we vote on this, and if people are against it, then we, then vote it down as a board member. If it goes through, let's meet with Geo, let's come up with an action plan, let's sit at a work session, and let's hear him, and let's, let's listen to his action plan. Geo has a reputation for being very competent, and I think the residents of Riverhead are pleased with the job that Geo's done at the highway department. And as I said at the last meeting, the close proximity of the two departments also is helpful. And then, from there on, we monitor the situation, it's something we stay on top of. I don't know how it got to be such a mess, but, um, you know, we move forward from here. And lastly, I wanted to thank you guys for looking into it and working on it, that's it.
But, and, and with all due respect, it's not a mess today. Everything in the audit report was addressed, and one of the problems is that the fuel pump is not reporting properly.
We don't know that, and that is not what Bill said, he said it's unclear what there is the discrepancy.
We don't know that, it's not as high as it may have to be either.
Catherine, I agree with what you said with one exception, I would like Geo to come in and address the board prior to the vote.
Okay.
That's what I would like, I want action plan.
Thank you, Tim.
I'm sure Geo will, well, you talk with Geo, and you felt pretty comfortable, and I'd like to hear it too.
It'd be nice if I knew. I'd like to support it, I would, I'd truly like to know, what are you gonna do differently? And if it's, I don't know, I think it's being addressed through Amory fixing loopholes that she sees, you fixing pumps. I know that right now, the computer is trying to switch that over is, is problematic, but that, hopefully that will address a lot of it. But, all these little things are being addressed, so it's not like it's like, nobody's really paying attention to that, but.
Well, my concern is that nothing's being done, and this is going on, and this is the plan, this is the plan that's before us, um, and that's why I was anxious to report on it, but.
Well, I'm not sure, nothing.
I, I feel comfortable that Geo will present an action plan.
Okay, I will speak to Geo, see if he will come to present before us, I'll see if he wants to do it on Tuesday. Um, otherwise, we can, uh, table this to have him come before us, but I think we should be okay.
Thank you.
Um, next, we'll move on to the next resolution, thank you very much.
Laura, you said to have him come on Tuesday at the board meeting, or to a work session, next Thursday to a work session?
It's forty-five days afterwards, I don't know if I wanna keep, but, let me see what he, what, what, what he feels. Um, if he feels comfortable coming to the work session, I have no problem being at a work session. As long as it's just him presenting and we're not, we're not, you know, it's not a, I don't wanna argue with him, I don't wanna, you know, have, we, we're asking him to come and just present what it is he would like to do with the municipal garage, correct?
So, you want us to just be quiet and not ask questions?
No, I don't wanna ask you to be quiet and ask questions, I'm just asking what information you would like him to provide.
Tell him to come in and see what, what, what he, right, what does he perceive the problems there, and what is he gonna do to fix it, that's all.
But you know he's not currently working there, right, so?
Well, there's a lot of communication there, don't, don't be silly, I mean, and, and Mike are pretty close, so.
But, I mean, what is it you would like him to present? All of the problems from the municipal garage that he's not in charge of right now, that he doesn't, you know, that's what we're, that's why we're asking him to take this job, is to evaluate what is going on there and come back and assess it. So, it, uh, I think problems would be a very difficult thing, it's, it, it would be like walking to new job and saying, tell me everything that's wrong at the second, and you're not even there yet.
But you, Laura, we're not stupid. First off, you're creative, because you perceive, you know that there's problems there. You talk about the overcrowded cars in the back that aren't getting either recycled or, or destroyed. You, you talk about gas that a miserable Amory is, you're talking about the POs and stuff that isn't done, inventory that may be missing, all these things that you're doing to justify this position, so you can't tell me Geo's not privy to any of that.
No, I haven't discussed those things with Geo, they're before the board. I see a problem, so I'm presenting to the board that there's a problem, and we need to come up with a solution. The solution was, was to, to have Geo be in charge of the garage for a period of time, to assess what's going on there, to see what corrective action could, could be taken during the year, and to, you know, you know, provide that information back to the board.
All right.
Well, I would like, if you could please, all those things that you just discussed that are your concerns with POs and with gas and with everything that you just described with Jim as liaison, because, or that you took, okay, that, those are, I would like to know what all your concerns are about the municipal garage, comparing them to the audits and what has, what the audit said and what hasn't been done.
That's a separate conversation, you guys were on the board when the audit committee came, the audit committee came and presented you, they came and presented you solutions for the garage, they came and presented you updates were going on. Since that time, one of their biggest concerns in, in the garage was the, was the, uh, gas. That, that gas wasn't being counted for gallons to gallons, and we know now that even after the audit and after the fixes that were put in place, it still remains a problem.
Cause it was reported by the lead, the person that we asked.
That's it, but, but, so we can have, we can have a, a work, another work session on the municipal garage.
So, right now, you're saying that the other things were fixed and it's the fuel that seems to be the same problem?
Jody, I'm saying we should put somebody in charge of the garage to assess what's going on and to fix, and fix any problems that are there, to have it work efficient, efficient, efficiently, and to make sure that we are not having six hundred gallons that, that the taxpayers are paying for unaccounted for, that's what I'm saying.
So, why don't, why doesn't somebody do an assessment, and then we'll figure out what the value is?
The assessment was done with the audit, the first audit, the assessment was done after the second audit, and this problem still exists.
Only with the fuel.
All right, we're spinning.
Okay, all right, let's move on to the next one.
Let's come, let's, let's.
So, number fourteen, which is appoint a member to the Riverhead Town Industrial Agency, um, it has been brought to my attention that in the, um, when we called for applications, that there was not an end date for the application, and I believe there had been two more individuals that have submitted applications, so we will table that, so those two are reviewed, and then we will come back with the recommendations one more time.
Is the, are the members, because I know that when we had discussed that we had vacant positions and that we had positions that we needed to be filled on the committees, that the committees would be interviewing these people, and then the committees would be making a recommendation to the town board as to who they felt should be on the committee, is that happening?
For the committees, yes.
Okay, so, but it's not happening for the IDA?
This is the board.
So, who is interviewing, and what are your, um, what is your experience in the IDA, and what the IDA looks at? To where you can pick out who the best person would be to sit on that board?
Well, I think the town board of vote appoints the IDA, I think that I was voted in by the public to make these decisions, and, and that's what I think my, you know, my experience is in doing that.
Well, first we need to know who applied, first, I mean, I would.
If you would like a list of the applications, I can send it to you, sure.
I go through them, I mean, Karen has all of them, I mean, I.
Yeah, sure.
You've got the applications, all the applications?
We already made an app, we already made a recommendation on CAC for replacement for a seventh person, but then we get four more resumes come in, so I held off on that resolution until I get those resumes circulated throughout the, the CAC committee, and they'll make the decision.
And do you, I think the same is for, for us, we're gonna put an end date for the applications coming in so that we don't have this continuing to go on.
Right, 'cause I mean, we were set to move forward, but I thought, hold on, let's, we have four people applying, you know, fairness to them, let's look at them as well. So, that's what we're doing, at least on.
So, I think that was just an oversight on our part, not putting the end date so people knew when to get them in.
Yeah, it was an open-ended application, so.
So, in, in, you know, for transparency, we will, there was a couple more that went in. Um, I believe that today we put up on the website that it, that it's closed out, we'll interview those two people, um, and then we'll see who was best suited for the position.
And in all fairness, it's nice to see a lot of people in the community that might wanna get involved in.
Oh, absolutely.
Especially one that says, I'll take anything, I like that, that's.
By the way, it's.
I can't get anything on my anti-litter though, you know, I need anti-litter people.
Well, we'll have to put that out there.
So, who has all the resumes for all the committees and the boards that?
Karen has them.
So, you, they came into the supervisor's office, and you sent them to Karen?
They come in to different places, some of them have come to.
When did she get them?
Karen was getting them all along.
I can do it, you don't mind, so, we, we split it up, so Karen works with all the town board liaisons on, you know, when you have your committees. So Karen was receiving letters from individuals whose terms had expired, um, and they wanted to re-op, reappoint it. Our office was accepting the new, uh, resumes, and then passed it forward to Karen, uh, a couple of weeks back. She had masterless, he's been continually authorizing them, so that town board liaisons can receive the new resumes, and they can talk to board.
I need to look them every day.
Would want to be reappointed or appointed, so all the information is, you know, with the town board liaison and with us, so that it's out there and committees can interview them.
Yeah, I look at them, I look at them every time I come in, which is rarely, but I, I do look at who came in, what new ones came in for what committees and.
But I think in the future that.
Cause I wanna get them all appointed, I don't wanna wait, be June before we reappoint these people.
I think in the future that the resume should go to the town clerk, and then the town clerk should disperse them too.
Absolutely agree, absolutely agree, they should be time stamped at the town clerk's office, then distributed both to the supervisor's office and the town board.
Thank you.
So, we can make a resolution up for that, so that everything, it's very clear, cause it was very unclear how it was all done when I came in. was very unclear how it was all done when I came in. What committee was, was, yeah.
Yeah, just a policy.
But just, it was very unclear where, everything was unclear. So we've been trying to straighten it up. It has been a challenge to say the least. So we can, we can put it positive.
It's a good effort though. It's, it's a good idea. I like that.
Thank you.
Now we have a whole pool of people we can.
I mean, it's been wonderful, the number of people that have responded. It really is.
Did we, did we get any more resumes for the architectural review board?
We did. I just got one yesterday.
Oh, okay, good.
Good night.
And let me say to the Riverhead residents that we're happy. We're happy that so many people want to be involved. It's a good thing and I agree with.
Yeah, what you wish for.
I agree with having them stamped.
We've had, we've had three members on the architectural review board for I can't tell you how long and we've advertised it time and time again. And we're still short two seats. So I'm glad to hear you got one resume. So we're still short one, folks. So we've been advertising it for a couple of months. If you want to be on the air or being.
And I got some other names. I did get other.
Come on in.
We're working on it.
Fifteen.
Authorizes notice to bidders. Thank you. Bidders for two eleven East Main Street Sanitary Sore Improvements, Riverhead Sore District, contract number RDSD seventeen ten. Sixteen authorizes town clerk to publish and post public notice to consider a local law to amend chapter one oh three entitled zoning and landmark management of the Riverhead Town Code, title one, article one, title, purpose, definition and interpretation.
Ooh, TDR is happy about that.
Yes. This is, this is, uh, changing the code for the four plant, floor plan for TDRs to help preserve our farmland here. In Riverhead, there were some exemptions that were placed in there and we're removing those exemptions to help conserve what we have left.
We took the bathrooms and hallways and non-livable areas out of the calculation, which.
This is a great thing.
Because it was a common use.
The Lee Browning Rule. That's what it was.
Seventeen is adopt a local law to amend chapter two eighty-nine entitled vehicles, traffic and parking regulations, part one thereafter entitled vehicles and traffic of the Riverhead Town Code, two eighty-nine dash twenty-nine penalties.
You're okay.
This is what we held the public hearing about the other day. This is just for the parking, parking violations and the amounts.
It's good idea.
Eighteen is adopts a local law to amend chapter two fifty-five entitled parades, assemblies and special events of the Riverhead Town Code, two fifty-five dash ten, conditions of granting permits. This is for the insurance form that it needs to be accompanied with it. If not, it will be a fifty dollar penalty. And if not submitted within thirty days, then the event will be canceled.
How would it be a penalty? It's a non-refundable administrative.
Yes.
Which is, because Laura does so much work on these things.
She does. And you know what, thirty, thirty days before the event, you know, if it's not in, then, then the onus is on, on the person having the event to comply with what we need to have in place.
And then see if time to see if it ever gets done.
And the chief of police looks at all of them.
Number nineteen, amend, Jim, amends resolution ninety-seven of two thousand eighteen, offers support to New York State legislation to amend the general municipal law in relation to the creation of a iconic Bay Regional Transportation Council. That's in the hope of being able to coordinate together to improve the transportation and reduce the traffic burden out here. Twenty is adopts a local law amending chapter one oh, one oh one entitled general provisions of Riverhead Town Code. This is the fiscal impact statement requirement. This is the tentative one that you saw, just as a practice, but that will make it a required document with the resolutions.
Good idea.
Number twenty-one is approves the chapter two fifty-five application of the Church of the Harvest Youth Program Plant Sale Fundraiser, March twenty-ninth through March thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Woo, hope it's warm by then.
Yeah. This is, twenty-two approves the chapter two fifty-five application of Home Depot Development of Maryland Plants Annual and Tree Sale, March twenty-sixth through May twenty-first, two thousand eighteen. Twenty-three is approve settlement of a claim. Twenty-four authorize a supervisor executing agreement with Epicor Software Corporation and upgrade of Doculix document management solutions. This is, this was a contract that expired or is this, what is this?
This is the Doculix bill. Actually, I'll compare quickly about this.
It's almost done with it.
Doculix was, we put Doculix together back in two thousand five or six. This is a new version of that. It's going, they're not supporting the older version. It has more bells and whistles, more security and everything else. I don't know when end of life is, but this is to upgrade to that version. We get free support for the first year and then we'll just have a regular support and maintenance after.
And who's still using the Doculix system? The building department is, I know that, but.
Oh, everybody still is using that. Anything that goes through finances, eventually everything's going to be on Edmunds. So all the stuff that gets scanned in, but other than that, everything else is still being used. Resolutions and everything else.
Would you just send out an email, just say, see who's still on Doculix and still using it, just for confirmation?
Because we need to make sure that those people are comfortable when we do finally move off of it into the Edmunds system.
Well, Doculix doesn't, Edmunds does not replace the Doculix system.
No, what happens is all the, all the stuff that we typically scan in and we will still scan this stuff in, there are the final payments for claims and all that other stuff that we have paper, had paper documents before. All was scanned into Doculix. That stuff is now scanned in by the user departments as it goes through that, that process and sits back in Edmunds. So if those user departments at the end of the year is going to take that data and scan it into Doculix, it's going into Doculix anyway.
Electronically both ways.
Right, but we don't have, there's certain documents we don't have anymore because a purchase rec, it's not a paper purchase rec anymore. So a lot of the documents leading up to that is all in the background in Edmunds. But the final product that we get, any paper documents that we still have, does get scanned in to Edmunds and will be put into Doculix.
Now, we're, we're going with this company because they're the ones that bought out Doculix, that the new owners of Doculix.
This, this, yeah, this is the company.
So it's not like it's a big process or anything. What the hell's going on with the?
It's feedback, Larry.
Feedback. Come on, man. Before we find somebody, can't really give a job. So it's just because they're Doculix.
Yeah, Doculix is the name of the, of, I don't know if the company is the, is the.
It says, it says it acquired the rights and interest of licensing of Doculix, is what it says.
It's a software.
Yeah.
So Doculix is a software, but the company behind it, that's, that's a company.
Docstar.
So we need to keep using Doculix?
Yes. Yeah, even if the, even if the volume from our department becomes less because some of it is in Edmunds, we still need to scan the rest of the documents in. We have paper copies.
You use it all the time, don't you?
Every day.
Yep.
All, all departments continue to use it the same way they used to.
Okay, but we could certainly send out an email and, and just confirm that everybody's still using it. So we'll have that just as well.
Well, we need to upgrade it. Two thousand six.
Yep. Twenty-five approves professional service agreement upgrade to the town of Riverhead GIS system with Lyro Engineering Inc.
This is actually premature.
Okay.
It's submitted. I've just been informed right after work session started, so we're gonna.
Pull this?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll pull that out. Twenty-six?
I don't understand this one.
I don't either. What is twenty-six? I haven't seen this one before.
This is the one with the recommendation from Bob Kevich to the building department for the fire stove, I think.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Yes, okay. So it's authorizing a memo to department heads to be sent out. Twenty-seventh, authorizing removal of fixed asset records from the system. Number twenty-eight is approves anti-bias task force members and officers.
Hold on one second.
This is huge.
Connie's here. Connie's here doing a great job running that committee. And.
Committee, it's a.
It's a, it's a club. So many.
This is a definite sample of our community wanting to be involved. That's all I wanted to say.
And I want to know, say, if you can get all of these people seated around, seated around a table, tell me where you're doing it because we need that for the tri-board meeting. Yeah.
Thanks, Connie.
Thank you. Twenty-nine's appoint members to the Landmark Preservation Committee. Thirty, reappoint members to the Landmark Preservation Committee. Can we put them together? Or they, no, they have to be separate, right?
They're separate, different.
Okay, yep. Reappoint, reappoint members to the Landmark Preservation Committee. And then thirty-two, reappoint members to the Landmark Preservation Committee.
How about thirty-three?
Repoint member to the Landmark Preservation Committee. Diane, for those, can we group them together for the meeting and just do them as one? Is everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. Thirty-four extends bid for the dry, dry hydrated line for Riverhead Water District. And thirty-five authorized notice to bidders installation of a tank mixer at plant number eight, Palvin North, waiting river, Bating Hollow, waiting river water district, H two N project number, Riverhead Water District, eighteen dash oh two.
And that's it so far.
That is it so far. We made it. And then first and a second to end the work session to go to into executive session for, what was that? Oh, is there another, is there something you want to?
There's not an additional reason. Is there another item we all wanted to make?
Well, Dawn, why don't you come up and just explain it? I think I know which one you're talking about for the, for the parking.
No, still not.
Is that in the package?
There, there was no one in here for the parking, for the parking.
That resolution is floating.
Okay. The resolution for the, to approve the, for the parking plan because we got the grant. I didn't see that in here.
Okay.
Somebody's got it in your side.
Okay.
So just quickly, you may have a reso that we circulate tomorrow for the bridge culvert application. That, this is a no-match grant. We're working with Gio to.
We'll take it.
Pardon me?
We'll take it.
Well, I, yeah, we want to. We want to submit the application, but we're waiting for the estimate from the contractor, which we don't have. We've been waiting for a week. Just Gio, this is, has to be submitted today. We've asked for the estimate. It has been, for some strange reason, not forthcoming, but we can't submit it without that information. So we're hoping to get it. We're hoping to be able to get it into the grants gateway today without traffic. But I just wanted you to know that we may give you a reso authorizing this application. This is preliminary application, so it's a real simple thing to do, but we need that. Can't do it without.
And this is, this is, this is a, a grant that just came and, and to Dawn's credit, to, to Gio and to Drew. It's a New York State grant where you, it's for culverts and, and bridges. So the, you know, where we have the piping underneath the road. And it's a fifty million dollar statewide grant that we could apply for with no match. It only came through maybe two and a half weeks ago. It, it came on our radar. They've been working. They went out and looked at all of those prospective places that might need it. And they've narrowed it down and.
They've selected one that they want to do. We've documented everything. We photographed it. It's, this is ready to go, but for that, we need to upload that.
Which, which, which one is that?
It's the, it's just east Hubbard Avenue under Terre's Creek.
Yes.
Carrie's Creek.
Yeah.
And it's, it is, needs, they're going to use a spin cast concrete on it. So it's kind of a process. They don't have to rip the road up. It's pretty straightforward. It's a two hundred thousand dollar cost. And so we're really anxious to get this estimate because I don't know why the contractor would not be on it, but, but we need it. So I just want to let you know it's coming.
Today's the deadline.
It is today and we, we've been working on it.
Come on now.
That's the last piece of the puzzle. If I, if I could do it myself, I would do it. But we're, you know, so you may have that present.
Okay. Dawn, do you just want to address the other resolutions? We don't have to have it here before it may show up in that package for, for tomorrow for the parking.
Yes, okay. So we had applied last May, I think, for a, through the consolidation, consolidated funding application through New York State ESD for a parking plan, not a study because we've studied everything till we can really not study anything anymore. So we use all the studies we have, create a plan with the help of a company. It's, so